Call the board on recording of the member present and absent.
McDermott, here.
Parker.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Kane.
Yes, here.
Read the open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District Number One of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting witnessed my hand on the sixth day of November two thousand seventeen.
Consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of those, these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. Three A addition of items and new additions to the agenda?
We have one. We have one letter of retirement.
Minutes of the October second, two thousand seventeen, regular board meeting and minutes of the October sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, special board meeting.
Anybody have any concerns over the minutes? I thought they were correct.
Approval of the treasuries report and the status of funds and investments.
As you can see, FY seventeen, at this point in time, nine million fifty-four. FY eighteen, nine million six-nine-one. So we've spent eight hundred, or six hundred thirty-seven, one seventy-eight, eleven more monies this year. General fund, we've only spent about seventeen thousand more than a year ago. So our gross production again is one hundred seventy-two thousand, two forty-six, thirty-six. That's up. Last month, we had one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for our gross production. And so far, it seems to be safe with the new session that we're having at State Cap at this point in time. So again, funds are in really good shape. Decent investments. They don't change a whole lot.
Consider the activity fund report.
As you can see, all the activities are in good shape at this point in time. Lady Bug, basketball labor brought in right about fourteen thousand dollars. I don't know if that's all indicated there yet in the eight-ten category. Doesn't look like it, but it will be, but right at fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars there on that labor loss. So we have, again, three hundred twenty-two thousand, three sixty-nine in our activity account, so we're really good shape there.
There's like twenty thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars in the concession stand fund. Is that?
That will be divided up. All the money from the concessions for the football and everything goes back into that. And then when all the bills are paid, then we have a formula for those particular groups or organizations that did that. That will be divided up at a later point in time when we're through.
Would that be just this, this year's?
Yes.
Okay.
So we've had five home ball games.
Yeah, there was a little bit of carryover from last year, more than, more than we thought. And that's actually been for the last two or three years. There's been several amounts of money carried over.
Any questions on the activity? Okay, on the fundraisers, we've got FCA, gonna sell some football playoff shirts. Our high school cheerleading ended October, mid-November, major life fundraiser, or Mojo Life fundraiser, excuse me. I need new glasses. And also H2O, sell fruit cups, tobacco-free, so forth, football games, they've done that. Key Club, wear hats, and then that goes to cancer fund, that they give money to people, Also, student will benefit case in Bison Harding on this particular donations. Cupcakes sales take place during the week, October thirtieth, November thirtieth, benefit case in Bison Harding again. Peak week events for Key Club and that money to offset costs for McCosker, Smithy, Harding And any questions on any of those fundraisers?
What's a Harding family?
High school family that has some cancer. Mother has some severe cancer.
Mother used to teach you?
No, 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 that's not Alicia. It's a different Harding.
Heart team.
Heart team.
It does seem like we're getting some of these requests a little late.
I, I think part of it was because of the peak week and the cancer and so forth, and decided to do it at that point in time to those individuals. I don't think they were thinking ahead of time during that cancer peak week and being able to do some of that. Honestly, they just wanted to pass a hack. I said, no, we can't do that because we've got to be able to run that through an activity account and be accountable for that. So that's why we allowed them to do those things. Okay, surplus items. Time clock, time cards, Walmart, and so forth, and that's from the high school, and they're down at the bus station. So if anybody needs a good time clock, they can get that. Child nutrition report. You know, things are going well. We're serving a lot of meals, it seems like, and I looked last year, we're serving ninety-eight more lunches than a year ago, forty-two more breakfasts, possibly due to full-day pre-K. But also, with that timeframe, we are, we spent sixty-nine dollars less on food and so forth than a year ago. So our buying commodities and so forth is proving to be a good situation. So, so our lunch program is looking better and better, but we do have eighty pre-K students, and so they are eating more meals and so forth. That's about a year comparison from last year.
How could you serve thirty-one days just because you serve two meals? Is it double?
Thirty-one days.
That's what it says.
It has to do with the last report, so she takes it from month to month on this, and this may be our first one that we've had in a long time.
It's through September.
Through September.
Gotcha. I thought there was a September one.
No, through September.
January shows August seventeenth through September twenty-ninth.
Okay?
I see now. Almost two months.
Any questions on any of the consent items?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda and those items referenced in three B, three C, three D, three E, three F, and three G.
Say it.
I'm ready for three.
You did all of three.
Yes.
Motion, second.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Aye. Go to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for this year eighteen. General fund number eleven, as referenced there, four A. We learned that we don't have to read those. They're all correct. We don't have to read them all. And Martin?
Some of the encumbrances, purchase orders, four eleven, that is for sanding and refinishing of the basketball floors at the high school prior to the season. Four thirty is supplies for the, all the school district at this point in time, so it'd be an open purchase order. Forty-four, one, that's twelve hundred dollars repair to suburban. I hit a deer on the way back from Chisholm and only did twelve hundred dollars worth of damage to it underneath. So that was a new suburban that we had to get fixed. Four hundred forty-two, upgrade Wi-Fi for all the elementaries, and this is to help meet the requirements for all the testing that we do and all of the new technology that we have in the building so that we can have as many kids on Wi-Fi as possible. So that was all three elementaries at that point in time. Four fifty-one, Chromebooks for the middle school. We are a focus school, and so we have some money coming in, and during that, we have spent it on certain items, so we spent some of this money. So the total cost will look like the school is paying for it, but we're actually getting about, I believe, about five thousand dollars at the middle school. And also at Lincoln, we did the same thing with some Chromebooks and got a little bit more money at Lincoln. So we're combining some state monies coming in. Also at the middle school, part of that money is from the insurance packages that they sell at the high school because that's to replace some of the apples that they borrowed from the middle school to make sure that we had all the kids at the high school apples. So it's a combination of money, but that's the total money that we're talking about. And then...
Does that put us pretty well one-to-one at the middle school with computers?
We should be one-to-one at the middle school, and they should be on cards, okay? They're still gonna have the cards, and there're gonna be thirty car, or thirty on a card. So two classes are gonna have to share a card and make sure that that all works out. But that way, they should have a one-to-one ratio down there with Chromebooks. Should help us in our testing, should help us with all of our NWEA that we're doing, and our mapping, and all that type of thing. So we're, we're getting closer district-wide, one-to-one.
Can we use our textbook money for that now? Is that correct?
We can, but our textbook money went in to buy new textbooks and so forth already. We utilize rule monies also for those computers, but total on the focus was right at around fifteen thousand dollars to split between Lincoln and the middle school on that. So we're utilizing all that. And that four seventy-two is reflected out of that focus money and some of the general money. The biggest portion of that, we bought a five thousand dollar active table. Now, rather than just active whiteboards, now you have an active table that a student could go to that table and, and work those type of things. So we have one at Lincoln now, so. And then four eighty-one, that's the power warts, the old gymnasium down at the middle school, and then we're gonna paint that. So the cost for the labor to paint is forty-eight hundred dollars, and the cost of the paint is fifteen hundred dollars. We had a estimate earlier this summer about eighteen thousand dollars to paint that, so we're...
The exterior, I think.
Huh?
The exterior.
Yes, the exterior. Okay. And then you can see on the other one, payroll, general, that's gonna be some substitutes and also some new people that we'll make the recommendation night later that we hire for the remainder of the school year, pairs, and pre-K teachers.
Do you want to take a motion?
Building fund.
We don't, we go over to them, sorry?
We go over, and then you can vote on them individually, or you can vote on them total package, however you choose. Okay?
You can do total package.
Okay. Biggest item that we had was replace some exhaust fans down at the middle school, twenty-seven fifty, two great dollars a penny. And then you can see the other expenditures there. Child nutrition. We even cover a hundred thousand dollars for U.S. Foods to be able to purchase foods for the remainder of the year, and also thirty-five thousand for Mid-America Wholesale. That will be an open purchase order for those. And if you don't have any other questions on that, then you can vote on that as item number four A through four C, is that right? Or D? Or you can vote on individually.
I'd make the motion to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following FYI, four A, B, C, and D.
Your second. Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott, aye.
Patrol reports.
I think Mr. Phee and Allison, Ms. Tucker are gonna combine an RSA report, and Madison, again, is gone with a child. She had a doctor's appointment, so we'll let you all take care.
Okay, so the reading deficiency act plays a huge role in our school and all schools in Oklahoma. The law's been in place for twenty-one years. It's been legislated all but one of those years and changed. Basically, the point is, is that we're, our goal is always to get our kids to reading proficiently at the third grade level by the end of that year. And there's, there's a great deal of research, sixty years or so worth of research, that would tell us that if we give a ninety-minute reading block every day, that those kids will achieve good annual growth. But if that student is behind, then we are only perpetuating that reading deficiency, so we have to give extra time, and that is part of what Ms. Tucker will talk to you about, about tier one, tier two interventions here in a little bit. But it focuses on, on five things in reading, and our teachers assess those, can then prescribe interventions to go along with them. Phonemic awareness, which is their, a student's ability to hear the sounds, and our speech pathologist has to play a role in that, too. If a kid does not have proper speech, they probably aren't hearing it, and so therefore they can't associate letters and sounds. Phonics, their letters and sounds, associating those things together. Fluency, the ability to gain meaning or not lose that meaning while they're trying to sound out words. Sometimes I have a kid that'll struggle with a word. By the time they get to the end of the sentence, they can't remember what the sentence was about. So we, we do a lot of things, oral reading, repeated readings, and things like that. Building vocabulary using word parts and word strategies, and then comprehension. And so all those things play into our regular classroom, our Title I interventions, our speech pathologist interventions, special ed interventions, and we're always trying to focus on those, those five pillars of reading to, to get them on level. If, if they don't pass that test, they can be promoted based on a good cause exemption. There are seven of those. The one that is usually used is if a student is on an IEP and has been held at least once, retained, then they can be promoted without a passing score on that. There are several others that deal with ELL students and portfolio assessments and things like that, but they're rarely used. And so, you know, basically, if we do anything in Washington, that's maybe the most important thing, it's gonna affect everything else that we do. So that being said, Mrs. Tucker's gonna talk to you about kind of where we're at right now and the things that we're doing to improve.
And just real quick, as the, the law states that a child is not automatically promoted to fourth grade if they do not, if they do not pass the standard two, standard four, which is vocabulary reading comprehension. They have to be above unsatisfactory and limited knowledge, which is now changing to basic and below basic. So we like to change things with RSA. So once again, they're changing some of the terminology, but it's, below basic would be the same as unsatisfactory, and basic would be the same as limited knowledge. And Washington and Longfellow, to follow three-tier assessment protocols that the state requires. Tier one is in the classroom, that's ninety-minute uninterrupted reading block that all teachers are doing in their classroom, and that is all regular ed students. Tier two is for students that fall below forty percent in our MAP, the NWA MAP assessment that we adopted from Washington through eighth grade this year. So if they fall below forty percent, they will receive outside, sort of outside the classroom in addition to their ninety-minute reading block. So these students will be on APP, which helps the parents know where they're falling and this, and what strategies they need to help them at home, as well as what we need to do in their interventions. They'll receive thirty minutes of extra instruction, and then there's bi-monthly progress monitoring with our literacy first, is what we're using this year. And if the student still not receiving the appropriate amount of gains, we go to tier three, and this is where students are scoring at least one year behind of where they should be in their reading. And many of these will be referred onto special ed, and they receive sixty minutes on top of the ninety-minute block and the continual progress monitoring. Some of the, you know, RSA documentations we have to have, we document the screening instrument, which what we use is that MAP assessment here in Alba, and progress monitoring, which I said was the literacy first, is what we're using to monitor the progress bi-monthly, I believe. And we also input it into MyDataFirst, which is just a software program that goes from Wash, follows them from Washington to Longfellow. Students also will have samples of their work that will be put into a portfolio. So we have that portfolio if we need it for a good cause exemption. So teachers will put those together, and a copy of their APP, which is the academic progress plan. And I passed out just what our test results were for spring two thousand seventeen. The first one, this was given to us, this was compiled by Edit that we're using for our curriculum mapping. They compiled this for us, and this was early data in July, and Alba was second in percent passing for the RSA with some of the schools they work with in area schools. And as you can see, we had five that did not meet criteria, and that came out to be seven percent. Where if you look on the other page, the state's average was twenty-one percent that did not meet the criteria, and Alba was seven percent. And so the state that, the RSA status that meets criteria, the state was seventy-nine percent, and Alba was ninety-three percent. And it breaks it down to, we had fifty percent were at or above proficient in Alba, where the state average was thirty-nine percent. And then there's some graphs as well, if you like looking at data that way better. The cut scores were created in spring, and this last spring, two thousand seventeen, cut scores are the minimum score to reach a level of proficiency, which are, the new cut scores are highly debated and considered inflated. So, but that's what we're working with. So whether we like it or not, that's what we got. And so we are using our MAP test scores to progress our, to see our, we'll test, we tested in September. We test again first week of December, and then we'll, we'll test again in the spring to watch, see where our students need additional help. And they, MAP has told us that students that score at or above seventy percent should be proficient on the Oklahoma test. So we, that's where we're aiming. We will see. But again, they only have to pass those two standards, which is the comprehension and the vocabulary, to actually be promoted. So those are the areas that we are striving for. And five did not meet, however, all five did meet on a good cause exemption. So all of them did pass and are in fourth grade, even though we had five that didn't meet on the actual test. They did meet a good cause exemption.
So, so when you look at the data, fifty percent were deemed proficient by, by the cut scores, but ninety-three percent were promoted based on passing those two standards. So it's a little bit confusing, because if you look at it, you're gonna say, wow, half of them didn't make it. Well, half of them didn't score proficient on the tests, overall tests, but the majority of them passed the two important parts, and so they were actually promoted. And then the other five were promoted still because they showed some form of mastery in a different way.
Very good information.
And Stephanie's at the ball game, so.
I kind of wanted to go through and highlight some of the work that's been done at the high school. I passed out to you a U.S. history sheet, and then one with, at the top, says remediation notes. This actually is data that comes from Mr. Olbert's class, and if you'll look at that over the course of this language, and this is, this is the information that he gets to me, and it actually has students' names on it. I've, I've, we've blocked out all the students' names, so you don't really know who's what. But if you look at that, what he's done is, he's given essentially four formative assessments throughout the first nine weeks, and then he gave a benchmark test at the end of the nine weeks to kind of assess where those kids are. If the student scored seventy percent on all of those tests, then they did not have to be remediated. If, if they scored seventy percent on the benchmark test, they may have scored low in one of the, one of the tests that he gave, but on the benchmark test at the nine weeks, if he gave that, they scored seventy percent on that, then they did not have to be remediated. If you look at that, the first number that's on there, if you look over on the second page, you actually put on there like the reconstruction test was a hundred and thirty points, and he left those off on the first page, but that, so that hundred and four is a hundred and four out of a hundred and thirty, and that's that eighty percent that he gets on that. Okay? So the number that is on there is in parentheses on the fourth hour and the sixth hour data. Then if you look at the very last column, which I think is the column that I kind of go to first, anybody that has a zero is in, not in need of remediation. So those, those students either passed with seventy percent in each one of the tests throughout the nine weeks, or they passed with at least seventy percent on the, the somebody test that they give at the end of the nine weeks, which is kind of the nine weeks. weeks test. It includes all of the areas. He also lists out there if a student needs which ones, if they did not pass and they did not make the seventy percent on the nine weeks test, which areas they need to go back and remediate in. So then he goes back and gives them the packet of notes for each one of the areas that they need to remediate in. And he goes over this, these notes with these kids and then they take a week and, and have a test. They retest over this information after he spends some time with them going over and remediating that. And they can remediate if they have extra class time during the class time, or they can come in at lunchtime, he's there every day at lunch. But he spends time with them going over these to make sure they've got the information that they need to have. One thing that he didn't, that I always ask him for, that he, he didn't put it on that sheet, but he gave it to me and I wrote it down a period, it's his actual class letter grade breakdown. He had nine As the first nine weeks, he had eleven, or seventeen Bs, eleven Cs, fourteen Ds and seven Fs.
How many Ds? Fourteen?
Fourteen. And so twenty-one kids had either a D or an F. But we had, you know, as far as that seventy percent goes and those, then he's got thirty-seven kids had above a C. So this is just real good information for him that he can look back and actually see the students that need to get remediated and that need to, and which, which part they need to be better at. He can also look and think that maybe, he, I asked him, because his grades were low when he went under progressive era. I said, his grades were, I mean, if you look at those, those were typically, it seemed to me when I went through it, had more scores less than seventy percent. More kids needed to be remediated. And I asked him, I said, what do you think the reason is for that four? And he said, you know, Mr. Potter, we had a lot of kids miss school for school events in that two-week period of time. He said, I think that plays into it a little bit because they, we had one act gone for two or three days there. And he just said, he said, I think a little bit of it is there were some kids that weren't there. They came back and made the work up, but they just missed some of that instruction that was there. So we're going to, we're going to work on those kinds of things a little bit and do that. Obviously, we want kids to be involved in our extracurricular activities and those things. Several of the kids that did not do well in that, on that progressive era test, did do well on the benchmark test. They got the information. So he said, you know, that, just that time period, time period in there, they didn't, they didn't do as well as he wanted them to do on that. And if you look in there, it'll, he kind of gives a different breakdown. But he said they, they didn't get it during that week and a half or ten days, but he said they did get it on the big test. So, so he was not, he was okay with that. He thought as far as everything goes, it was, overall, it was good information.
Is this a new strategy for him?
No, no, he's kind of always done that. It's, it's.
So what are, what are his results?
What do you mean?
Okay, so he, he recognizes here that those that need remediation.
Right.
And then he gives them help in remediation. Does he show how this, how this?
I haven't looked at those, that where he shows the remediation and actually what's there as far as the statistics that go with it. He, I mean, there are some high school kids that obviously don't, they're just not going to do it regardless of what we do. And that's, most of those seven are, I, four of the seven that I looked at are kids that have not very good grades in any of their classes. But the ones that are remediated, if they put the effort in, then they, they usually bump up and score pretty well on that remediation test that he gives. Because it's just, that remediation test is just a, it's, he goes out and grabs questions off each one of those places that they remediate from. It's like, it's a shorter version of that era test that he gives to do that. But I don't know about the data as far as kids that actually raise their score from the remediation.
I mean, that would be, the outcome would be interesting. I mean, it's great that he recognized.
Yeah, and he, he breaks them down every, every test that he gives, he breaks this down. So when he put this together, it's pretty easy for him to do because he just goes back and pulls the data that he's already done to make the cumulative one for, for the nine weeks.
Are there any other high school disciplines that are working on things as well?
Nobody is to this, to this degree yet. We have some that work, that they do, they do bits and pieces, but nobody this extensive. He spends a lot of time working on statistics and.
Like he needs to work on.
Those things, and yeah, yeah, he does. He's, he's got a couple of our history teachers that are working along those lines. Of course, they don't have the time, energy that he puts into it, so.
Well, he's a true professional.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Were we really getting any, weren't we going to get the results of all the testing? Or we're not getting that?
Yes, you will here in just a minute. Mr. Argo is going to make that presentation after.
All right, I guess I, okay, thank you.
Okay. We have three resignations and we have those attachments. Miss Howard Mergers going into college, worked at the foundation. She was our pre-K teacher at Longfellow. And then we have two custodians, Wood and Webb. These are our college kids that we tried to work out and just didn't work out because of college and so forth, so both of them have resigned. Also with Joanne's retirement and everything, Madonna Durkey will be moved to the activity fund, director. And we're, I know that Mr. Potter and Stephanie Martini are looking and interviewing secretaries at this point in time, so hopefully we'll get them together to where they can help each other out. Joanne's going to be doing some education with Madonna and Madonna will be working with the new secretary there also. By state law, anything over $10,000 donated to the schools, we have to report to the board. We have a $15,000 donation from an anonymous giver and they want to stay anonymous, but it's for football video room, for supplies and technology there and football filming work. Okay? Really, there's not a whole lot to tell you about legislative because I don't know anything because they keep changing, there's not a whole lot. Biggest thing that I am scared of is they're starting to talk about taking care and rewriting the school formula. And anytime you do that, that's pretty dangerous. Right now, we're not on the school formula, so it may not affect us. But anytime you make change like that, it's pretty scary because they maybe start thinking about taking local funds and giving it back to somehow. And I think Sean Heine made a great statement. He said, you know, if this happens, schools need to be held whole harmless for at least a year to see how that creates problems for different schools. But other than that, I don't think anything's going to come out of this session at all for any teachers or for, just to fill in the budget holes at this point in time. So you all know as much as I do on the legislation at this point. Back when they were talking about $3,000 pay raises for teachers and not being in the formula, I did email our representative and told him that that wasn't truly an equitable thing to look at because we would not get the $3,000 from the state, but yet people would be paid for it from taxes and so forth. That if it was going to be equitable, it needs to be a line item top the situation to where everybody's treating it. And I don't know if you've heard it or why, but anyway, he said he'd look at it. Okay, communications. You know, we had a Title I meeting and I was pretty much shocked at that point in time. We're found out and going along with this reading sufficiency and that type of thing, that we have forty students identified in our district as ELL students. We do not have an ESL teacher at this point in time. So we're really not in compliance with any federal guidelines or anything. So we've opened up a position to see if we could find an ESL teacher. Hopefully, we would have somebody by the beginning of the second semester. We have young students coming in here that can't speak any language whatsoever, or English, excuse me. So we're looking at that and seeing what we can do to reach those forty students that we have identified. And so those are something that we'll be looking at in the near future and bring to the board. And with the resignation of Steve Ellis on the board, we have a board opening at this point in time. We have three gentlemen that are interested in the board seat. They have been told that if the board has a special board meeting to interview and come out of that special board meeting and then they would vote to have one for the remainder of Steve's term, then that person also have, if they wanted to continue, would have to file in December. And I believe that's December fifth to the seventh to actually run. Steve had three years left on his term, so by the law, you have to be voted at the regular election, which is being held in February. So at this point in time, we'd have Steve's board seat up and also Tiffany's board seat is next one up. So we could have two possible board openings for the election in February. So how do, how does the board want to handle this? Do you want to have a special board meeting, say at five o'clock, bring in three gentlemen, interview them, come back and vote so that that person can be ready to go for the December board meeting?
Well, see, they'd be on December, January, February. I mean, they'd be on more than just December until March or after the election in what, April. You know.
No, they would go.
Election's in February, so that the new person would all come in March.
Right.
The board meeting was before that.
Yeah. So they'd be December, January, February. They'd be on three months to help us through. It's your pleasure. You want to interview them or?
Certainly.
Okay.
I think that's, that's the due diligence to the kids.
They might be with us a month if they want to file.
That's good.
So I will try to find, if you all could let me know within, it takes us forty-eight hours to call a special board meeting, so we have to have that planned. And I don't think we can get it done during a lunch break with three of them, so I would suggest we do it at five o'clock some evening. You know, we've got a lot of basketball games coming and so forth, so a week from Wednesday might be the best time to do that.
Wednesday the fifteenth?
Wednesday the fifteenth.
Monday the twentieth, that's the week of Thanksgiving now.
Right.
I can do that.
I can do the fifteenth?
Yes. Okay.
So we'll get it taken care of, get the people invited and get there Wednesday the fifteenth. Check. All right. Just for general information, we still have 1,046 students enrolled in the school district, so we're holding our own. And at this time, Tim's going to give you our state report as we know it today. I think it will come out the same way, but there's always a chance that it could be changed because of the state.
No.
Okay, so these are preliminary results in the week of November the twenty-seventh. State will mail out our paper copies and then once we receive those paper copies, then each school sign notes those home and gets those to parents. So these are preliminary and basically, these are, these are just some, some graphs that I pulled from the electronic copies that we have. So basically, what I broke everything down to was to compare us to the state because we can't right now, we're seeing at other, at other districts. So draw your attention first of all to our language arts and you'll notice that out-of-school district is above the state in every, at every grade level. So I think that's a real tribute to our teachers and I think Mrs. Tucker and Mr. Beely spoke on that, the reading sufficiency, our teachers are doing at out-of-state. I think that when we look at our math, we, you can see some deficiencies or some, some areas where we need some improvement. We're not quite as high at some grade levels as compared to the state. But I think that we're really on the right track with our teachers, with the alignment that we're working towards and the curriculum mapping that we're doing, I think there's hope. And I think that we need to make sure that they understand that we trust in this process and that, and that through this process, there'll be improvement.
Is this from, I'm sorry. Is this from last year's testing?
No, this is all, okay, so this is all this year's, from 2017, last spring.
Last spring's testing.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
People like your seventh graders.
Last year.
So, so really, what this, what this, what I've done here, and I'm not, we don't, I won't take you through every slide, but you notice our science, again, we've got good scores throughout, obviously at the tenth grade, it's a little bit lower. But when you look at a state overall, I think we have to keep in mind that everyone's scores are lower. This is a complete reset of our scores. And again, I have complete confidence in, in all of our teachers because we're doing, we're taking measures to do, and to school better.
State superintendent also gave out an explanation of all the tests and so forth. It has been posted on our website for probably a month now on the reason why and of her situation. I don't know how many people have looked at it, but it is on there.
So if you look at this, and we'll just, we'll just look at third grade assessment because Shane and Allison talked about this briefly. And you can, you can look here at our language arts, it's going to be your reading. And we are above the state average in that basic category all the way to the advanced. So there's, there's some good things that are happening. Now, of course, like Shane mentioned, we've still got to improve that overall percentage and we understand that, but I think we're taking steps to do that. I want to show you on our website, parents can go to parent resources and when they get to that page, we put on here a video from Ms. Hoffmeister that explains the new test results, flyer in Spanish, and also some FAQs about what these test results mean. So once we get our final results, we'll go ahead and put this, put this breakdown on there also so that parents can go through and see where we are comparatively to the rest of the state, once we get those final results in. You have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Communications, E-Rate Pioneer Telephone?
Oh, yes, excuse me. I didn't mean to do that.
It's a good letter.
It is a good letter. And a lot of times, we don't get to say good things about some of our employees, but Tony Pico is a representative of Pioneer Telephone and she's worked with and wrote this letter about what a good job Mark Carroll did do for us on our E-Rate and so forth. And I just wanted to share that with you, with the, with the board and everything. Mark does work hard at this and we've had a lot of changes this year with our voice override and E-Rate changes and those types of things. So congratulations, Mark, for a good job. Thank you, Mrs. Dermott, for not letting me go on.
We didn't want to miss that blessing.
Absolutely.
Seven A, discussion across the board action, vote to approve an offer of employment on a one-year temporary contract for applicant number one, certified teacher for fiscal year eighteen.
All of Mrs. Tucker, this is about this center.
We are very lucky to have not only someone who was qualified in early childhood at, in the middle of a school year, but someone who also has pre-K experience, who applied and we're happy to present to the board, Teresa Lloyd. She has three years of pre-K.
Two years of pre-K.
At Oakin and also what, second and third as well?
Second and third, five, five years of second and one year of third.
So we're really happy to find her.
Teresa, explain your experience in Arkansas with the reading program that you were involved with throughout. Teresa, explain your experience in Arkansas with the reading program that you were involved with throughout the state.
We, um, used a program called Direct Instruction Reading, and it was grades K through three that did it all the time. And it was very structured, very uninterrupted, very, it was scripted. And you would, I mean, like, okay, for example, kindergarten would learn the word "the." And that's how, we had to take a vote on it. Do we teach it as "the"? Do we teach it as "the"? Well, we were in Arkansas, so it was "the." Then, we would, like, sound it out. This sound is, this, this, this sound is "e," but that's not how we say, we were, we say the word is "the." So, I mean, it was just very structured and very, they did really well with it. And, uh, we had a very high, um, ESL class group of kids, and they did very well with that on learning how to read and letter recognition. Welcome. Thank you.
Look, from, from our interview and everything, it sounded like our three different tiers of reading that we try to do and so forth, and it was a school-wide program there in Arkansas. And all third, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, was all doing the same thing, whether they had 18 sections or whatever, everybody was working the same. So, felt like it worked right into what we're trying to do here.
And they divided it by, um, they would divide the classes up by, um, reading abilities. So, you didn't have those struggling in with some that were reading on third grade level.
Sure.
So, I believe with Mrs. Tucker, myself, recommendation, we'd recommend to the Board Teresa to be hired as pre-K for the remainder of this school year. Been very happy to have her.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'd make the motion that we hire Teresa Lloyd as pre-K teacher at Longfellow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll let y'all have your meeting.
Thank you.
Don't blame you.
Discussion with possible Board action, vote to approve an offer of employment for the following non-certified positions booked for fiscal year 18, non-certified hires.
We would like to recommend Steve Ellis for the Transportation Director for the remainder of this school year, and Deborah Geisler at Lincoln for a para, Laura Lampkin at Middle School for a para, Laura Mark at Longfellow for a para, and Mary Tyler at Washington for a para. And these are paras that we are hiring to replace, or we have students transfer in that needed a para, because they're following an IEP at this point in time. So, I would make the recommendation to the Board that we hire all five of these people.
So move.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Discussion of possible Board action, vote to approve the following Board policies. CHC dash R, DABB, DNA, VOCCA, EFVCC, EIAR4, FOB, GK. We've had these, we've looked at them, have we, Parker?
You've had these for a month. And again, these are probably from the School Board Association. We have a contract with them. They rewrite our policies as they are changed by legislative action or a Board action. And these are policies that we need to update our own policies, and I'd recommend to the Board that we approve these policies as presented.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
7B, discussion of possible Board action, vote to approve the ALBA Independent School Budget for fiscal year 18.
Terry has compiled all the information from Buddy Carroll and has put money in the different areas where needed, as she always does. And, uh, pretty much, this is our budget of $17 million. $17 million, 938, 347, 97.6. Uh, and this is just usual standard procedure from what we get from our Buddy Carroll. And also, we have, uh, budget analysis there, bottom of that, so. Building fund, we have, uh, $2 million, 203, 673, 26. So, we're up there for a bit in that area. So, I would recommend to the Board that they approve the budget as presented.
I'd make a motion to approve the school budget for FYI team.
Second.
Yes.
That's second. Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
This budget's now larger than the university's budget? I think so.
No.
Maybe there's a 24 million. Okay. I thought maybe 15, but it's, it's 24.
Maybe it'd be just the building.
No. Don't put that on record.
You're guessing.
I'm guessing. I guess 24 million. Okay. Discussion of possible Board action, vote to approve closing of the following precincts for upcoming school board election. Precinct number 02110, 020220, 020310. And at Black County Precinct Number 76008 and Woods County.
You have a letter, and you've had a letter for a month from Senator Kane, Secretary of Woods County Election Board, asking for us to close these precincts. A year ago, we voted to close these precincts because of the number of people in those. And they do get a ballot sent to them if they're closed, so they have the opportunity to vote.
I'd like a motion that we approve this.
Close those precincts.
Second.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Discussion of possible Board action, vote to approve the annual election resolution to call for a school election to vote for a Board of Education member from Office Number One and from Office Number Three.
And this is something that we need to do each and every year by law to have a general election of our Board members. And there's no change, except for that we do have a possibility of two Board seats open at this time. And I would recommend to the Board that we approve this.
Motion we approve.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott? 7G, discussion of possible Board action, vote to approve the following Board meeting dates for calendar year 2018. January 8th, February 5th, March 5th, April 9th, May 7th, June 4th, June 27th, July 9th, August 6th, September 4th, October 1st, November 3rd, November 5th, and December 3rd.
And these are pretty much corresponding, um, Board meetings from this year. Uh, and also to meet the billing timeframe that we need. If you have any questions on any of those dates.
So move.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott? Discussion, 7H, discussion of possible Board action, vote to approve the following assignments for fiscal year 18. 7H1, Madonna Durkey as Activity Fund Custodian. Can we do this as a bunch if we have to mark the time?
You can do it all.
Okay.
There's no objections.
7H2, Madonna Durkey as alternate insurance coordinator of the employee group Insurance Foundation. 7H3, Steve Ellis as Director of Vehicle Transportation and Maintenance. 7H4, Altery Steve Ellis to do requisitions, supplies, equipment, and services for vehicle transportation and maintenance.
Any questions? This is what we usually do in July, when we have everybody, all these different jobs and all the actions.
I'd make the motion we approve these people.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
7A, discussion of possible Board action, vote to enter into win-win negotiations with the ALBA Education Association and the ALBA Board of Education for fiscal year 18.
We have a letter from Kenny Almbird, President of the ALBA Education, requesting this, and I would, um, say that we need to go into negotiations with the ADA at this point in time. So, I would approve this request.
I'd make a motion that, uh, ALBA Board go into executive session for fiscal year 18.
We're not voting on executive session yet. Let's just go, are you gonna, the win-win, Larry, the win-win?
Yes.
She just jumped ahead there. We're doing the win-win.
7A.
7A.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Rose, 8, proposed executive session to discuss staff negotiations, 25 hours, Section B2. Do you have a motion?
Need a motion for that.
Would we enter to executive session to discuss staff negotiations?
Second.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Aye. Good to see you.
It's all very, yes.
Thank you for your work.